Okay, good evening and thank you for joining us tonight. I am Inga Houston, President and CEO of the Dublin Chamber of Commerce. This evening's candidate forum for Dublin City Council is brought to you in partnership with the GFWC, Dublin Ceremony Women's Club moderated by Gina Chanel, Gina Chanel Wilcox and Sierra Bailey with The Pleasanton Weekly and produced by Amos Productions. The Dublin Chamber of Commerce convenes leaders and influencers, champions a strong and vibrant business community and is a catalyst for economic growth. The Dublin Ceremony Women's Club are a vibrant group of women devoted to improving our community who work to support the arts, preserve natural resources, promote education and stress civic involvement. And this candidate forum is a natural collaboration between the two organizations. I hope this evening's forum provides Dublin residents the opportunity to learn about their candidates for public office in order to make a more informed decision when voting on Tuesday, November 8. Tonight's program will be available to re-watch on the Dublin Chamber of Commerce and The Pleasanton Weekly's YouTube channels. Without further ado, I would like to turn the program over to Gina Chanel Wilcox, President and Publisher of The Pleasanton Weekly. Thank you again for joining us this evening and for your patience.
Thank you, Inga, and to the audience members, including the people who called me. Many, many apologies and we're gonna get going here in just a second. I thank the Dublin Chamber of Commerce and Jody Amos Productions as well as Dublin San Ramon Women's Club. Also, thank you to the community members who submitted questions prior to the event because we will not be able to monitor chat. We have consolidated questions on similar topics and the candidates were not given the questions prior to the event. We are going to start out with two-minute opening statements from each candidate. And is there a timer on the screen?
You. So I'm gonna run a timer on my phone and you'll hear it bling, okay?
Okay, we have two-minute opening. Then we're going to move on to questions and they will have 90 seconds to respond. And then at the very end, and we will say this is the end, we're moving on to closing statements and closing statements will be three minutes long. We have asked the candidates to save rebuttals for the closing remarks. And going in alphabetical order, we are going to start with candidate Lena Doe. If you can please unmute and get us started.
Good evening. My name is Lena Doe. I am a 10-year resident of Dublin. I live here with my wife and our two dogs. I'm a first-generation American, daughter of immigrants. My education and background is in politics, public administration and psychology. I've worked in politics for 10 years as a political aide and now I work in the private sector with our family business where we are a referral service for interpretation and translation service to help limited English clients navigate services. I have a lot of board and commissions experience, including the City of Dublin Planning Commission. I'm also a member of the Association of Digital Leaks International as a board member. As a city council member, my focus will be improving public safety in our community, working on improving pedestrian safety, economic development and supporting small businesses because small businesses are very dear, near and dear to my heart because I work for a small business, improving mental health access because that's my psychology background and enhancing cultural diversity. I'm running on three Cs: change, compassion and community. I want to help reaffirm our sense of community and compassion for others and move forward together to affect the kind of change that will make Dublin a better Dublin for all. Thank you and I hope to answer all the questions tonight.
Thank you. And next, Jean Josie.
I want to thank all of our hosts for holding this forum today. I'm Jean Josie. I'm currently serving as the Vice Mayor of Dublin. I've been a Dublin resident since 2000 and on the city council since 2018. When I'm not doing city work, I work at Dublin High School as a coordinator of our in-school tutoring program. I'm running for reelection to city council because while I'm very proud of the work that our council has done in the last four years, there's more to be done. In my first term, we opened multiple new parks with three more in the pipeline, improved traffic by bringing more intersections into our network of adaptive signals, designed and started on the Cultural Arts Center, created and moved forward on the downtown preferred vision, increased public safety by adding officers and adding a new behavioral health unit for our police department, and worked with our Tri-Valley partners and Access Health to create a mental health urgent care center for our residents. We've also moved the needle on affordable housing by approving two fully, new, fully affordable projects of over 400 units in our downtown and converted over 1,000 of our existing apartments citywide to aid-restricted reduced rent units for those with moderate incomes. In addition, we've made strides toward reducing the city's carbon footprint and preserving the planet. We passed the first in the Tri-Valley Climate Action Plan for 2030 and beyond and we're moving to bring Dublin to carbon neutrality. We've embarked on a $20 million-plus energy efficiency and resiliency project to, among other things, keep some of our cities, facilities and major intersections self-sustaining and operational in the event of a power shut-off. Finally, we worked very hard to give our businesses and our residents everything we could to help them weather the COVID storm. We offered technical assistance to help our businesses transition to online commerce, handed out hundreds of thousands of dollars in grants and loans and changed the municipal code to facilitate both temporary and permanent outdoor dining. We gave our residents rental assistance so they could stay in their homes. In the next four years, I will continue to build on these quality of life issues for our residents. Public safety, economic development, recreation opportunities, affordable housing and environmental and fiscal sustainability are priorities for our residents and for me. Our residents and business owners know they can trust that I have the experience and the knowledge to make sound decisions for the city of Dublin.
Thank you. And candidate Kadri.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to thank the organizers from Pleasanton Weekly, the Dublin San Ramon Women's Club as well as Dublin Chamber of Commerce. I'd also like to thank all of the Dublin residents for joining us today. By way of formal introduction, my name is Kashif Kadri and I'm running for Dublin City Council. My wife of 19 years and 10-year-old son, who's a fifth grader at Amador, love our community and everything it has to offer. Over the past 15 years, as an involved and active local citizen, I've been serving in a number of, serving our community in a number of various boards and commissions. I currently serve on the Dublin Planning Commission as an alternate. I serve on the Alameda County Public Health Commission, the Dublin Unified School District Citizen Bond Oversight Committee and the Amador Elementary School Site Council as President. On a professional level, I'm a scientist by training and I've held multiple leadership roles, including business development, partnerships, commercial operations, strategic planning and product development. My key priorities are increasing affordable housing and improving Dublin's infrastructure. As a planning commissioner, I've been pushing for more inclusive housing on every new project and will absolutely continue to do so. The second priority is around partnering with small businesses to support them, particularly in the context of COVID. On the Economic Development Committee as well as working with friends and family who own small businesses, it's important to, it's important to help them with the struggles that they're faced with and it's my goal to implement every effective support program. And then the third priority is around environmental sustainability and we absolutely need to ramp up sustainability efforts and protect the environment by focusing on smart infill redevelopment, creating business hubs through mixed-use development and pushing for up-to-date and accurate environmental impact reports. As a planning commissioner, I've pressed hard for updated assessments so that we can not only understand what's going on with the environment but then also mitigate against any potential harm. And thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Since we don't seem to have a timer, I am going to keep the timer and I will alert you when, by doing something like this, when you have 30 seconds. And you have 90 seconds to answer questions. We're going to start with candidate Josie and Sierra is going to ask the first question.
Thanks Gina. Okay, question one. Housing is among the top concerns for voters headed into the city council election. As you know, there are many related factors to consider. In addition to increasing state mandates such as unhoused and underhoused individuals, the water supply, school and traffic impacts, just to name a few. What is your view on the Regional Housing Needs Allocation or RENA numbers the city received for the next cycle and the housing element draft? Specifically address the housing site list and the implications of not meeting the goals.
Thanks. Of course, that's the big question that all of our residents want to talk about always is growth. And they want to talk about it in relation to what we've already done, which isn't really relevant to the RENA cycle. The state wants us to always do more. And so the numbers that we got, the 3,700 new homes, it's an awfully high number for a city that's been the fastest-growing city in California in the last decade. In addition, the breakdown is for not just affordable housing, but it's for market rate housing as well. Of course, we have not met our affordable housing numbers in the last few cycles. No city in the state, to my knowledge, has met their affordable housing goals. We are way over our targets on, on market rate housing. But that's how you get your affordable housing. In Lufy's, inclusionary zoning, all of that plays into it. Of course, water is a big, big deal. But newer construction is very water-friendly and so it uses less than existing units. We're putting in drought-tolerant landscaping. We're doing a lot around water. We always ask DSRSD to make sure that any new development that comes in can be served by, by DSRSD. We can't, we can't consider school impacts, as most residents know. But we have more that we can do with our transit-oriented district and affordable housing and we have to, we have to provide more housing. We don't have much of a choice.
Thank you. Gina, you're muted if you were speaking.
You can go ahead and, and next candidate would be candidate Kadri. 90 seconds.
Yeah, the housing shortage is a really big concern, not just in the Bay Area in general, but in Dublin in particular. The city has been seriously deficient in meeting its allocations in the, in the last RENA cycle. And really, to be a vibrant and sustainable city, Dublin needs to seek to be truly inclusive. That includes our seniors and first responders and teachers. We need to really expand our affordable housing across income and economic categories. And I would look forward to partnering with affordable housing advocates and experts to explore concrete action steps that the city council can take to ensure that we meaningfully address this critical gap in housing. At the same time, I firmly believe that the growth needs to be sustainable. This means that we should not expand, expand at the expense of our limited greenery and open space. It means that we need to have the infrastructure, including public transport and transit, excuse me, schools, water, sewage, trash, clean energy to serve all of the residents. My goal would be to promote Dublin that is building towards a vision of a model 21st century, one that's livable, vibrant and deeply rooted in environmental sustainability. And if elected, I will strive towards this vision of a vibrant, inclusive and sustainable city. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Doe.
Yeah, I understand the RENA thing. As a political aide, we dealt with that. And every city struggles with this, the numbers that the state handles, hands down. And you know, as a city, as my fellow, you know, candidates have said, that we struggle with it and we have a hard time with it. But you know, we also need to start thinking creative ways to do this because we do need to keep our open spaces because that's what makes Dublin special. So we need to look at, you know, other opportunities. And I know that we have many houses, developments down pipeline and it's important, but we also need to be smart about the growth. We can't build just because the numbers are there and we're required to do that. And I know there's, you know, penalties if we don't, you know, make those numbers. I understand that. But we also need, you know, to be understandable that we are a city where we're running out of space. We need to think of creative methods to make these goals work, but we also need to be smart about it. We also, we need to look at, can we sustain this growth if we keep on developing and not look at the environmental impacts? The water shortage, you know, we are in a drought and if we can't, you know, sustain the water we have now, how are you going to be able to say in the future, you know, residents of Dublin, when we don't have enough water? So as, you know, if elected as city council, I'm gonna, you know, be cooperative and try to figure out ways to, you know, work and make sure that we are smart about the way we grow and hopefully sustain, you know, our communities for the future.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the next question. I'm trying to find a, a better sign for our 30 seconds. And we are going to start with candidate Kadri. Earlier this year, the council reversed a decision on an East Ranch project that included 573 housing units as it faced a citizens' referendum, only to then have a, to reapprove the project with new terms when the developer amended its proposal. Please reflect on the East Ranch process, the amendment and the council's decisions. What, if anything, could have or should have been done differently?
That's a very challenging and great question. I think fundamentally, it's important to recognize that the, that particular project was approved quite a few years back. I think a critical gap in terms of the city and how it approached that development project, there was a gap around communication. As a city council member, I would focus a lot of time and effort on community engagement and education so that everyone understands the history of that particular project and, and be able to respond to any request, questions, issues, concerns that citizens have appropriately. I think one of, you know, fundamentally, one of the biggest problems was just understanding that that project was earmarked quite a few years ago and was entitled essentially to, to move forward. The other big concern that I saw with that project in particular was around partnership. There were a lot of concerns about the environment around school and around water. As I mentioned, I was part of the, I am part of the Citizen Bond Oversight Committee. So I've got a really good working relationship with several members of the school district, which I plan on leveraging as a city council member. Then also I had the privilege of working or attending the Water Academy and have a lot of contacts within DSRSD as well as Zone 7. So it's about community engagement, education and partnership.
Thank you. And candidate Doe.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Okay. Earlier this year, the council reversed a decision on an East Ranch project that included 573 housing units as it faced a citizens' referendum, only to then have to reapprove the project with new terms when the developer amended its proposal. Please reflect on the East Ranch process, the amendment and the council's decisions. What, if anything, could have or should have been done differently?
You know, um, like my, my fellow candidate said, this was, you know, a development that was earmarked. And the, you know, but the citizens spoke up and so there was obviously concerns on their part. And so it's important, you know, to have communications and also to take into account what, you know, the residents are saying and what they're, you know, stating and, and help them understand and bridge the gap. I think that's what tends to be missing a lot is communication. You know, if you're not in the know, you don't know. And I think that's what happens is, you know, because I, you know, wasn't on the planning commission for five years, I, you know, kind of fell off, you know, the face of the earth and I didn't feel like I knew what was going on. So I can understand, you know, the citizens frustrations, you know, when a development comes up and they don't feel like they have an input into it. And then, you know, to see the city council go again and improve it after they, you know, threaten the referendum. And we've seen a lot of that. So it's important to, you know, have community meetings and have understanding and have openness and transparency, which seems to be a lot that's missing. And, you know, that's what, you know, I think a lot of people wish to see. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Josie.
I'm sure. And of course, my perspective is a little bit different, having been on the council that, that approved the project. And I, I agree with both of my colleagues that said that communication was a bit of a problem. The people that started the referendum heard the communication, but the citizenry in, at large, did not hear the communication. And so we tried really hard to get the message out over and over and over again that we had limited discretion on that particular project. And the discretion that we had was about how to satisfy the inclusionary zoning requirement, the affordable housing piece on that project. As, as Kashif alluded to, the project was not approved years and years ago, but the East, the East Dublin specific plan was approved years and years ago and that area was designated for housing a long time ago by the voters of Dublin. And so when a project comes to the city council that is consistent with the specific plan and the general plan, we have very little discretion about whether we can turn that down because property owners are entitled to build the things on their property that that property is basically zoned for. So we tried to communicate to the residents that we had discretion on how they satisfied the affordable housing piece and that was all we had discretion on. So when it was referended, we couldn't stop those houses. But we lost the negotiated piece that the developer had agreed to go over and above on affordable housing than what they were required to do. And unfortunately, that's the piece we lost. We had never had the discretion to turn down the 570 homes. So that was unfortunate and we could have done a better job of communicating that.
Thank you. And Sierra, you want to take over?
Thank you. This question will begin with candidate Doe. A CES Development Company has submitted plans over the years for a 77-acre area off Tasahara Road. The plan approved by the council is a mixed-use development that could include 650 residential units as well as a large retail component. What are your thoughts on this project and the approach taken by the city and the developer?
This is, I know this is a lot that's in contention right now and there, you know, the idea of retail is great, but you know, looking at the plans, there are not, you know, as much retail that could be, you know, planned in there. It's a great, you know, it looks great on paper. I haven't looked into it as much as I should have. But I, but I, I know this plan and I know that there are, you know, great ideas. But you know, there could be some other changes and I would love to see more affordable housing. I know there's some, you know, plans for that. It's a lot of homes and a lot of space that's, you know, could have more openness. But you know, as a plan, it's under contention, you know, I don't want to, you know, talk about it too much, but you know, I would love to see more open space in that area and, you know, more transport-friendly, pedestrian-friendly areas. I know that there's connectivity, but there's not a lot in that plan.
Thank you. Candidate Josie.
Thank you. First, we have to be a little bit careful about wording and saying that there's a plan that's approved by the council on that parcel. There is not. We have a preferred vision for that parcel that was developed by the citizens in conjunction with the planning commission and the city council and the property owner because several projects have been brought forth on that property and all have been rejected by the citizens of Dublin and the city council. What is approved is a preferred vision that is not legally binding. It's not legally binding on the city and it's not legally binding on the property owner. However, it is the culmination of a long consultant-led outreach process with the citizens of Dublin to say, what do you want to see on this property that is also economically viable? It's something that could be built, something that the property owners can, can bring forward that, that they're willing to build and that brings the city what they want. So the idea was that, you know, the citizens want one thing, the property owners have rights and we want to see something that the citizens want to see. So I, I, I would love to see an actual project that is consistent with that preferred vision because it's what the citizens of Dublin said they want to see on that project. And I'm excited to see what comes before us because I agree, we want a mix of things on that site that is feasible to build.
Thank you. Candidate Kadri.
Yeah, so I had the privilege, as I mentioned, I'm on the planning commission and I had the privilege of sitting through a study session on that property. I'm excited about the level of community engagement that the city and developers have partnered with and, and getting a really good response and, and communication going. I think fundamentally, we need to focus on both supporting current businesses, obviously, within Dublin and then also attracting new businesses through economic development, both of which I have quite a bit of experience with on a professional level. Additionally, we need to find ways to deal with high employment and bring some of those jobs to Dublin. We need to create programs to grow, sustain and support businesses and connecting them with the community and providing them the right incentives to thrive. And as part of that, that project and beyond that project, it's important that we build a vibrant, environmentally and economically sustainable city that has the balance of both homes and businesses, as the case of this project. This is going to help promote a healthy and sustainable, walkable, bikeable city and keep some of those tax dollars within Dublin and support, support the city's needs. You know, this is a vacant lot at the moment and I think on focusing, by focusing on, on similar lots and creating mixed-use spaces, we can attract a variety of the housing and commercial and retail businesses to ensure that Dublin can grow into that vibrant, economically sustainable city that we all envision. And it's, it's important to set the tone for future development through thoughtful land use and planning.
Thank you. Next question, we are going to start with candidate Josie. And that was kind of a nice segue into this one. As the pandemic guidelines have eased, the council recently approved an action plan to help businesses reimagine and retool their operations. What are your thoughts on the plan and its phases? In what other ways should the council and the city support existing businesses and attract new businesses?
Oops, turn my mic off. Yeah, I'm, I'm really excited about our economic development team, the things that we were able to do during the pandemic, the things that we're doing going forward. We first and foremost want to support the businesses that we have. We, we did, we gave away a ton of money during COVID, both of our own general fund money and also of pass-through money from the state and the feds to make sure that the businesses that we have here were able to survive here. We did non-monetary support as well with technical assistance to get the businesses that weren't online, online, so that they could pivot. We helped with outdoor dining and temporary use permits and things like that. But going forward, we're past, we're past that emergency stage now. Now we want to both support our existing businesses and bring new businesses. And small businesses, large businesses, we want to get jobs producers here. We want to bring in high-tech businesses here. We have a ton of quivers in our, arrows in our quiver from tax incentives to helping find opportunity sites. That's not helping. There's no numbers moving on that. I'm not quite sure.
Oh, just, sorry, sorry.
Sorry about that. And we have a great economic development team that is always reaching out to our businesses, always doing new promotions for the existing businesses, helping companies that we're trying to attract here find opportunity sites. And I, that is an absolute focus of mine is trying to find new businesses and support the ones that we have. Sorry, I was a little distracted about what.
Okay, I let it go a little bit. I promise not to touch the buttons anymore. Okay, candidate Kadri.
Yeah, excellent question. As I mentioned at the beginning in my opening, small business support is very near and dear to my heart. I've got a lot of friends and family that own small businesses here within Dublin and outside. And unfortunately, in the context of COVID, a lot of them have been forced to make the very difficult decision to close. We need to, you know, as I mentioned, focus on supporting current businesses and then also attracting new businesses through economic development. You know, as a planning commissioner, we, we helped pass the easing of dining, outdoor dining restrictions. I think that's critical, just a very responsive action that could be taken by the, by the city and, and allowing some of those businesses to keep their doors open. I also think it's really important for the city to connect small businesses with resources that exist. And that comes through communication and education. There are several local programs, state programs, federal programs that can help keep small businesses in, you know, going, not just to survive, but thrive in, in this really difficult situation. I'll, I'll end with just two quick notes. One is that, you know, there are a lot of really creative programs that are being done through the Dublin city, things like Taste of Dublin. I think we need to encourage that sort of thing to get people out. And the second is in terms of economic development, as a scientist, I would love to see more biotech and life science and, and that, that creates a nice tax base for the city.
Thank you. And candidate Doe.
This question is near and dear to my heart. As a child of small business owner, future owner of that business, I watched my parents struggle to survive this business and. um, to survive this business and, you know, during COVID, and we're lucky that we survived, but we're not back to, you know, where we were. And I would say, you know, most small businesses will say that, you know, they're not hundred percent, they're not even eighty percent, maybe seventy-five percent if they're lucky. Um, you know, this pandemic, you know, was hard on many businesses, and, you know, as a small business owner, I know it's, you know, it's a struggle, and I, you know, I want, first of all, commend the city for, you know, all the work they've done and all the things they've done to reach out to the small businesses and, you know, as Cash have said, you know, they did Taste of Dublin and all this, you know, highlighting our businesses, you know, that's great. Um, you know, trying to, you know, make business, making, you know, customers come to the business, that's great, but, you know, they're still struggling, and a lot of, you know, immigrant families don't ask for help. And, you know, we need to reach out to them. And so, you know, as someone, you know, who, you know, thinks we need more businesses, we also need the infrastructure for, you know, scientific buildings and, you know, other kind of, you know, high-tech industries. Um, if we don't build them, then, you know, how are we going to get them to come here? Um, and, you know, entice them, but, you know, as a city council member, I'm going to help, you know, bring in more businesses and work with our economic development department and see what we can do to make our company.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Do you want to take over, Sierra? We're, we're winging it here.
Okay, our next question will begin with candidate Kadri. What responsibilities do you believe the city and council have as it relates to the public school system in Dublin? In what ways can and should the city government work with the Dublin Unified School District to achieve common goals that benefit students, families, and the entire community?
Yeah, great question. Um, so as I mentioned in my opening, I currently sit on the Dublin Unified School District Citizen Bond Oversight Committee. Uh, that committee oversees all of the bond measures, how we're spending, uh, money and keeping, keeping the school district honest, right? There's, there's a, uh, fiduciary responsibility around that and, and making sure that there's a lot of transparency and accountability. Uh, coincidentally, the, uh, that, that report was presented to the, uh, school board last week, um, and, and got really great feedback. The, 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 the key, the key part of city council is, is around communication and, uh, and partnership, right? And I, I mentioned that earlier, but that part is really important to make sure that everyone is sitting down on the table, uh, having that open dialogue, understanding the needs from both ends in terms of new development projects and where we sit with school overcrowding or on the cusp of school overcrowding. Um, you know, making sure that, that, uh, that the communication is direct and open and transparent is really critical, and I, as I mentioned earlier, I, I plan on leveraging my relationship with the school district members, um, who I've worked with alongside, uh, for, for the past two years and, and leverage that, um, leverage that, that relationship.
Thank you, candidate Doe.
I, you know, I believe the role of the city council is to work with the school board and the school district, even though we do not have direct, you know, oversight or anything, but we need to work as a partner for partnership because the schools impact the city and every, and the city impacts the schools. So, you know, when we develop something, then, you know, the schools get overcrowded if we don't, you know, work with them and discuss what, what the impact is. So that's the important, you know, that's the important role of the city council. You know, as a public school student and someone who loves education and is constantly learning, you know, I believe that, you know, if we do not, you know, take into consideration everything, you know, that comes together, you know, we will have wonderful schools, but we will have no place for the kids to go, and then that can impact on housing in our city. People do not want to come to Dublin because they don't have a place for their kids to go to school. So I think our role as city council members is to work together and in partnership and have, you know, joint sessions and discuss these things. And, you know, and look at what the impact is for our future and the future of Dublin.
Candidate Josie.
Thank you. Yes, and of course, this question is, is one that's super important to me, um, given that my day job is with the Dublin School District. Um, and I sit on the school district city council liaison committee, and I have for the last four years. Um, and of course, we have to partner with our school district. We have, um, not exactly the same constituency, but overlapping constituencies. Um, all of their constituents are also our constituents, and so we do everything we can to partner with the school district. Um, in our liaison committee meetings, we, we of course, talk about the upcoming development, make sure that they know what's coming down the pipe, pipeline, so that they can plan for their enrollment numbers. We make sure that the projections that they are, they, um, they're prevent, presenting in their annual SFNA report, um, take into account projects that we know are coming up. We partner on, um, joint use agreements for city and school district facilities. We have, um, uh, we pay for their crossing guards. We have, um, given or, or very cheaply sold the school district land in order to build two of their newest schools and, um, one that's coming up. We, um, lease space from them for our after-school program so that their kids have a place to go after school. We have a ton of ways that we partner with the school district and making sure the lines of communication are open are, are really key, and the relationships that I have with the school board members, um, and with the, um, staff at the schools are, it has come in absolutely invaluable on the school district. So while we can't consider school impacts when we approve or disprove a development, we certainly do take those things into consideration, um, in the global sense.
That was great timing. Okay, so we are on to question six now, and we're going to start with candidate Doe. Um, the Alameda County Sheriff's Office recently removed forty-seven deputies from active duty after they scored poorly on a psychological, on psychological exams that were part of an internal audit, an audit done after a sheriff's deputy was arrested for allegedly murdering two people in Dublin. Do you feel there are grounds to review and possibly revoke the contract with the county's sheriff, county sheriff's office for police services? Is it time Dublin created its own police department like most of its neighbors? Why or why not?
First of all, I want to address the mental health issue because as a, as someone who studies psychology and is working on finishing PhD, you know, I believe it's very important to take into account the mental health issues that, you know, affect our officers. And, you know, I totally understand officers, you know, failing that and then being removed because it's very important to have, you know, strong mental capacity when you're in a, in a line of duty and, and you're, the public safety of both you and, you know, the people you are serving are on the line. As for the, um, the idea of, you know, revoking the contract of the sheriff's department and creating our own police department, you know, I think it's important to, you know, have a study about that and see what the impact of the budget would be on our city. You know, there's fiscal impacts of creating your own thing and, you know, moving from one type of service to another is going to have growing pains. So, you know, it would take time and it would take some study. It would take some, you know, planning, um, to make that transition smooth if that's what was best. Of course, this would be meetings with the public and everything, so, you know, this is not a yes or no answer. It's a, you know, we need to look and see if this is beneficial for us and the people that, you know, of Dublin. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And candidate Josie.
Um, thank you. Yes, that report was, um, staggering. And the morning that it came out, I did ask our, um, city staff if any of those officers were Dublin police officers. Um, I do not have the full data on that. I don't know that, um, we've been given that information yet. I'm waiting on that result. Um, I don't believe they are, but if they are, um, I don't believe they'll be serving in Dublin any longer. Don't know the full information on that. Um, several things about the psychological profiles, those officers never should have been hired in the first place. I'm glad that they are not, um, on active duty right now other than at their desks. Um, taking forty-seven officers out of the Alameda County Sheriff's Office puts a strain on all the other officers. That situation is exceedingly unfortunate. But to other contract with, um, Alameda County Sheriff's Office, no, I don't support revoking that contract or even going down that review. We know what that would, the fiscal impact would be. It would be, um, hugely impactful, and it would also impact the day-to-day operations. Um, the benefits that we get from having that contract are huge. When an officer is injured or an officer goes out on, um, leave for any reason, we get backfilled with a new officer. If we were on our own, we would have a vacancy rate of about eighty percent. Uh, I'm sorry, about twenty percent at any given time with officers out for one reason or another. When we have an incident in Dublin, we get, um, more than the double police officers respond if it's a large incident. Um, the mutual benefits of having that contract are huge, but we pay very close attention to the data and which officers are serving in Dublin, and I could talk about this for hours, and I don't have the, the time, but we check our data very carefully.
Thank you. That was good stuff. Um, candidate Kadri.
Yeah, a few points. Um, so first of all, we, we all deserve the right to feel safe where we live, work, and play. Um, specifically addressing your question in terms of public safety, uh, I do believe we need to initiate more public, uh, you know, community oversight, uh, creating checks and balances and make sure, um, that everyone is in line and the, and we have that accountability transparency. Uh, over the summer, I had the privilege of attending the Dublin Citizen, Citizens Police Academy, which was really eye-opening just understanding all of the services that are at our disposal and available to us. Um, in terms of switching out from the contract model to, uh, creating our own, uh, police force, uh, you know, there, there are issues around budget and, and the expense of not only creating the services, the cars, the vehicles, you know, the equipment that's involved there and the resources, but then also we lose out on the scale. If there is an incident, we have access to a larger, a much larger pool of officers and equipment, really specialized equipment that we probably otherwise would not have access to. Um, and the last thing that I'll say is just around, um, mental health. I think that's another area that we need to focus on, not just with the officers, but the residents and making sure that, that everyone has access to mental health services, focus more on prevention as opposed to reaction. Thank you.
Thank you, and, um, Sierra is going to ask our last question before we go to closing statements.
Okay, and for this, we all have probably gotten into our rhythm by now, but, uh, we'll be starting with candidate Josie. Traffic congestion on city streets from commuters, drop-off and pickup times around schools, and car accidents are major headaches and seem to only be getting worse in Dublin. And of course, there's a concern of increased traffic associated with future housing developments. What ideas do you have to alleviate these problems?
Thank you. Um, I, I think our traffic has actually gotten a little better in the four years that I've been on council. Um, we have added more and more of our, uh, major intersections to the, um, the cable network, the fiber network, and so we have more of them that are now, um, adaptive signals, which means that they, um, we don't set the timing once during the day and forget it. They adapt, given that the conditions at the intersection at any given time, and we are continuing with that work. Um, and of course, the work from home has helped a little bit during the pandemic, so I, I can't take credit for that. Um, I am, however, on a couple of regional committees that we look at that. I'm on the Wheels Bus Board, and we, um, we are always looking at how can we get people out of a single person, a single car and into carpooling and into buses and to use BART and to, um, to do these things, not just for traffic, but also for the environment, because those things are super important. Um, I do think when Emerald High opens, that's going to help a little bit with the morning commute, people, um, that are commuting, getting their kids to Dublin High. Um, we only have one east-west road across town, as everybody knows, um, and then the freeway, so it's very hard when everybody's going at the same time. The, um, this is another way that we partner with our school district, but having the, um, the bell schedules the way they are with middle school and high school starting so close together. Um, those are conversations that we have about, you know, is this, is this what's best for Dublin? Um, so all of those things are important, but carpooling is really key for residents when they're trying to get their kids to school. Um, staggered work schedules are important, making sure that transit comes back as people get back to work. Thank you, Gina.
Thank you. Candidate Kadri.
Yeah, I think we need to push for smarter solutions for traffic flow and, and easing some of the congestion um, as part of a larger vehicle traffic control system, uh, you know, intelligent traffic lights paired with traditional lights with sensors can really help the flow, um, the, and, and, and really ease some of that, um, both vehicle, uh, congestion as well as pedestrian traffic. Uh, and I'm absolutely committed to finding ways in which we can plan and invest in transportation to reduce these problems. Um, also wanted to mention that we need to really focus on, um, addressing the lack of accessible and affordable transportation options, public transportation options. Think that's really important, and, and that obviously requires a lot of partnership with other services, um, and agencies. I also want to mention in terms of, on, on the string of partnership, right, school safety is something that you brought up, and it's something that's near to, near to my heart, you know, it's serving on the school site council at Emmettor Elementary. Uh, school safety is a big concern, and I think that, again, is going to be a partnership with the school districts, the, the city and, and police, making sure that there's enough monitoring and, and access to, to safety, particularly around, uh, uh, drop-off and, and pickup times. Uh, in the final comment that I'll make, you know, as the environmentalist, right, we need to focus on making Dublin more walkable and bikeable, uh, because that fundamentally is just going to reduce cars on the, on the road and, and generally ease traffic. Thank you.
Candidate Doe.
This is a question that's always near to me because I always tell people, you know, when I moved here, I used to be able to ride my bike and feel safe. And I think in the last ten years, it's because there's more cars on the road and people are not paying attention, or there are more there's more residents and there, um, people just, you know, not pay attention to traffic safety and traffic rules. So that's why I want to run on pedestrian safety and um, making our streets, you know, easy to ride a bike or, you know, navigate the streets and feel safe. Um, I tell people, you know, I walk my dogs in the morning, every morning, and, you know, there are days that I'm scared to cross the crosswalk because someone just turns around the corner and not stop. So we need to work on that. Also, we also need to make sure that we have dependable, um, transit, public transit. And, you know, as Cash had said, you know, we need to make partnerships because it's not a one-town thing. It's partnership to make sure that the connectivity is there and that we can get from one place to another, and, you know, that things are on time. And, you know, it needs to be affordable for people who do not have cars. Um, so, you know, to make our streets safer and less congested, we need to work on our public, uh, public transit connectivity. Thank you.
Thank you all. Uh, that marks the end of our questioning period. Each candidate will now have up to three minutes to provide uh, closing statements. Uh, we'll go in reverse alphabetical order and start with candidate Kadri.
So after listening to the other candidates, um, while there is some overlap in, in our thinking in terms of our platform, there are a few key and specific differentiators, uh, in, in my platform, which, uh, uniquely position me and qualify me for this opportunity to serve on the city council. Uh, the first is around housing. Uh, we absolutely need to ensure inclusive and affordable housing across all income brackets. Uh, we need to do this responsibly and sustainably, ensuring that we have the adequate infrastructure and services to support this. Uh, we mentioned school and, uh, water services, but also police fire, uh, things along those lines. Uh, the second is my commitment and combination of community service and professional experiencing, eh, eh, experience, excuse me, in managing complex and substantial budgets, uh, partnerships that have generated growth for businesses and implementing new and innovative technologies, uh, which again, make me uniquely qualified to address the challenges of Dublin. Uh, as I mentioned, I've been serving on a number of boards and commissions within Dublin, uh, and, and look forward to serving this new capacity. Uh, I've been honored with several endorsements, uh, including council members Mike McCorristan, Sean Kumagai, former mayor Tim Sabranti, and, uh, uh, Eric Swalwell, the Alameda County firefighters. A, a complete list can be found on my website, kashiffordublin.com. Uh, and, and finally, I think it's vital that we have people serve on the Dublin City Council who represent Dublin, who will represent Dublin with integrity and strive for the well-being of each and every one of, of the residents. Uh, my primary goal is, is going to be the, is going to be to be the voice of Dublin, represent it honorably, and grow the community to even greater heights. Uh, over the past few weeks in particular, I've had the opportunity, the pleasure to connect with so many of you, and I will continue to do so as a council member. I want to understand the things that you love about Dublin, but also your issues and concerns and problems so that we can work to resolve those. Uh, let's come together and work on common solutions. Um, based on these conversations, I've shared my thoughts on my three priorities around inclusive housing, small business support, and environmental sustainability. And you can read, uh, more about these on my website, kashifordublin.com. Uh, again, I'd like, I, I, I'd love to connect with each and every one of you. Uh, please visit my website. Let's connect. Let's. Please visit my website. Let's connect. Let's engage. We absolutely cannot do this without your support. You know, there there are a lot of really wonderful things about Dublin. It's why we all choose to live here. Let's work together to tackle the areas of improvement. So once you receive your badge ballot, please remember to vote for the candidate with the education, the experience and the plan to improve Dublin, that candidate being Kashi Kadri. And in closing, I'd like to thank the organizers Pleasant and Weekly, the Dublin Chamber of Commerce and the and the Women's Club of San Ramon and and Dublin for putting this election special together. And thank you to all my Dublin friends, family and neighbors for participating today. Thank you.
Candidate Josie. You are on mute.
Sorry about that. I want to again thank our hosts for hosting this forum so that the residents have an opportunity to hear from all of the candidates. Our residents know I'm the candidate with the knowledge, the experience and the relationships and the support across the community. They know that I was instrumental in getting our diversity, equity and inclusion task force to go beyond policing to look at everything we do in Dublin, from our hiring practices to our rec guide offerings to our festivals and everything in between. We've recently adopted dozens of recommendations from our task force to improve equity in Dublin. And as an educator, equity is at the core of everything I do. This issue is so important to me that I've been appointed to serve on the National League of Cities Race Equity and Leadership Council with about fifty other mayors and council members from across the country. Each of us on council also serves on regional committees and I serve on both the Tri Valley Transportation Council, which I currently chair, and on the Livermore Amador Valley Transit Authority, which operates the Wheels Bus. Through these two agencies, I am able to really advocate for complete streets solutions to our region's traffic. I've also been a leader on climate action. In fact, in my first few months on council, I introduced a ban on styrofoam takeout containers as Dublin was still allowing them. I'm pleased to say that my colleagues agreed with me and we phased them out in favor of more environmental environmentally friendly alternatives. I currently represent East Bay cities on the League of California Cities Environmental Quality Policy Committee, where I help advocate for legislation to help address the climate crisis. Going forward, my priorities are to continue to ensure that Dubliners can enjoy a high quality of life. That means that there are plenty of housing choices and going beyond deed restricted affordable housing to true housing affordability. Prioritizing quality of life means continuing to build parks that have the amenities that the changing demographic of Dublin wants and continuing to push forward on making our downtown preferred vision a reality. It means ensuring that we have the right mental health resources and in addition to our police and fire services that keep all of our residents protected, means growing our economic base and bringing more jobs producing businesses to Dublin to shorten our residents' commutes. It means leading on climate action. It means demanding reproductive healthcare rights. It means seeing all people as worthy regardless of gender, sexuality, ethnicity or race. And it also means remaining fiscally prudent and keeping an eye on our bottom line so that we can continue to maintain what we've already built. And it means giving residents what they want from their local government. Representatives who will remain accessible, listen to them, consider all sides of an issue and vote with integrity for the good of all of Dublin. Because of my leadership in my first term, I'm endorsed by a wide coalition of state and regional leaders, community members and organizations. I can't possibly name them all in the time we have remaining, but you can go to my website at genejosie.com for a complete list. Some familiar names are Congressman Eric Swalwell, State Senator Steve Blazer, Assemblywoman Rebecca Bauer-Kahan, Supervisor David Halbert, Mayor Hernandez and the entire Dublin Council, the Dublin Teachers Association, Alameda County Firefighters, the Alameda County Democratic Party. Thank you again for your time and remember, please vote Gene Josie for Dublin City Council.
Thank you. And that's been at least candidate Doe.
I want to, I also thank you all for this opportunity tonight and all residents of Dublin that are watching this broadcast and be viewing it not live. We hope that we, you know, answered your questions and that you had, you know, a great opportunity to get to know each other of us. You can always check out my website for more information, lenado.com. You know, I think the one thing that makes me unique with these can, my fellow candidates is that although I have experience with city issues as a former planning commission commissioner and other boards commissioners, I've been on the Alameda County Mental Health Board. But I haven't been directly involved in more than five years. So I will bring in a new perspective and lens to the issues. And that goes the same way with the school district, you know. I don't have children in the school district, but that doesn't mean I don't care about the schools. I know the importance of education, our schools, the safeties and the impacted connections in school that the schools have with our city. So as someone who's seen as an outsider right now, you know, I will bring that outsider view to the city council. I will bring a new perspective, a new lens. I will bring all my experience in public service as well as private service. So I, you know, I deal with, you know, billions of dollars of budgets when I was, you know, city, working in city councils and school board supervisors. I know I have experience in analyzing policy and I know that, you know, I can't, I don't have all the answers and I know that the residents of Dublin has answers too. And so I know that I will be accessible and be the kind of city council member where, you know, I will look and have, you know, look to you to, you know, give me what your experiences are because my experiences are different than your experiences. And it's important to make the understanding that, you know, you need to bring in all the different, you know, perspectives out there to understand. And I think that's the one thing that's been great about meeting people is learning and being open to what they have to say in their perspectives and to, you know, understand where they're coming from. Because it's important to, you know, to understand a resident of Dublin who's been here for thirty years as someone who just moved here the, you know, the other day. You know, there's a reason why, you know, we all call Dublin home and, you know, I want to see that a Dublin where you have kids and then they go away, but they come back because they've had so wonderful experiences. And, you know, my, you know, role as city council member is to make those experiences that we will have for the future where there the Dub, the future of Dublin is here and they will bring back and raise their families to be future Dubliners. Thank you.
Thank you so much. On behalf of the Pleasant and Weekly, I'd like to thank the candidates again for Dublin City Council for participating in tonight's forum.